I did, I leaned forward.
Good.
One minute.
I know.
It's always the longest minute.
My dog ears.
Hands up. Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Apparently you need to turn the volume down on that.
Welcome to the August 18th Post Falls City Council Meeting. Shannon, please note that all council members are present. Tonight, under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, we have some wonderful wards and awards to present. Chief Knight, I'll turn it over to you.
Take this down so I can speak. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Pat Knight, Chief of Police. And up here, I've got my patrol captain, Captain Mueller, as well, helping give the awards out tonight. But today's a wonderful day for the Police Department. Not only yesterday did we get our email back up and running after three months. Never knew you'd like something so much until it was gone. But we can finally communicate again, and that's a big day for us. So we're excited. But even more exciting this evening, we get to showcase some of the good work that's being done by some of our staff. And as you know, we like to present these in front of Mayor and Council and department heads as well. So we have three awards to give this evening. We have a life-saving award. We've got a Medal of Valor to give out, and we've got a Purple Heart to give out this evening, two of which are firsts for this Police Department. First and foremost, we'd like to recognize Officer Lucas Krieger. If you'd come down, please.
By order of the Chief of Police on this date, Officer Lucas Krieger is hereby awarded the life-saving award. On November 15th, 2011, the City of Post Falls Police Department established the life-saving award, which is presented to department members that have distinguished themselves by performing or reacting to a life-threatening situation in a positive and professional manner. The member's reaction to the situation must have saved or substantially prolonged the life of another person existing with the strong possibility that if action was not taken, loss of life or critical injury to another person would have occurred. On March 9th, 2020, at approximately 9:20 hours in the morning, Officer Krieger responded to a medical call on East Third Avenue at an apartment complex. Upon Officer Krieger's arrival, the reporting party stated that her friend was unconscious and barely breathing. There were also three young crying, I'm sorry, three young children crying in the background. Officer Krieger was familiar with this female and the reporting party from prior contacts, knowing they struggle with drug abuse. Officer Krieger determined the female was not breathing and immediately deployed Narcan and initiated CPR, continuing until she began to show signs of revival. At this point, Cootney County Fire and Rescue arrived and took over the female's care, administering a second dose of Narcan, which fully resuscitated her. She then became uncooperative and refused further treatment, fleeing to the side yard of the apartment complex. Officer Krieger approached her and was able to calm her down, explaining the importance of getting proper treatment at the hospital. She eventually consented to the ambulance ride to Cootney Health. After she was transported, Officer Krieger gathered evidence from the apartment and spoke to the reporting party about the events that led to her call for 911. Due to the circumstances and condition of her apartment, Officer Krieger opted to shelter the children. It was later found that the female went into cardiac arrest again while at the hospital. Fortunately, she was in close proximity with skilled medical providers who were able to revive her again. Had Officer Krieger not taken the time to talk this female into transport, she may not be alive today. Furthermore, Officer Krieger's actions to shelter the children ensured their safety until their mother could resume proper care for them. Officer Krieger is certainly a credit to this department. And one thing I wanted to read, and again, I won't reveal any names here, but we received a letter from this female, and I wanted to read that this evening. Says Lucas, "I'm the woman who overdosed at the Ross Point Apartments a couple of weeks ago. My family and my upbringing would not like me to be writing you this letter. I don't know if you know them," and she states their names here, "but they wouldn't be cool with me talking to a cop, let alone thanking them, although one of them is very thankful I'm alive. Nevertheless, thank you so much for saving my life. I hate heroin and only did it because it was in so much pain. But I was actively seeking treatment. I got approved for funding, but the port of hope closed down. I wasn't aware that KBH had a treatment center. God works in mysterious ways, and I don't think our previous meetings were an accident. I don't remember the other officer's name, but if you could thank him and let him know that I'm in treatment and that not having a felony will allow me to go back to school easily. I have a long, hard road ahead of me, but I'm grateful to have one. Yours truly."
I should state that typically, we would want to shake hands, but
Discuss that early on. We turn to shake the hands with Mayor and Council. Yeah. I didn't know if bump the fist was appropriate either. I have Officer Alex Sporleter come down, please.
By order of the Chief of Police on this date, Officer Alex Sporleter is hereby awarded the Medal of Valor. On October 7th, 2011, the City of Post Falls Police Department established the Medal of Valor Award. The Medal of Valor is the department's highest award. Recipients of this award have performed willingly and selflessly in the line of duty and distinguished themselves by performance in an act or courage involving risk of imminent serious personal injury for the purpose of saving or protecting human life. On the evening of March 3rd, 2020, Sergeant Justin Anderson was at a residence attempting to contact a male who was known to have a warrant for his arrest. Moments into the contact, Sergeant Anderson called out over the radio that shots had been fired and he had been hit. Officer Sporleter arrived at the scene in remarkable time and was able to assess Sergeant Anderson's injuries, get him into a patrol vehicle, and transport him to awaiting Cootney County Fire and Rescue Personnel at Fire Station 1. Through his heroic efforts, Officer Sporleter was able to get Sergeant Anderson to safety immediately. Thankfully, Sergeant Anderson has since fully recovered from his injuries and has returned to full duty. Without the skillful and tactful actions of Officer Sporleter, Sergeant Anderson's recovery may not have been so fortunate. Officer Sporleter is truly a credit to this department.
This is great, I could give these all night. Our final award for the evening, Sergeant Justin Anderson.
By order of the Chief of Police on this date, Patrol Sergeant Justin Anderson is hereby awarded the Purple Heart Award. On October 7th, 2011, the City of Post Falls Police Department established the Purple Heart Award. The Purple Heart may be awarded to a member of the department who suffered or suffers a severe or disabling injury or death while significantly furthering the accomplishment of the police mission. On the evening of March 3rd, 2020, Sergeant Justin Anderson was conducting observation at a residence where a well-known subject with officer safety history resided. The subject was known to have several arrest warrants and had been evading law enforcement for quite some time. Sergeant Anderson saw movement at the residence and was out of his vehicle, then proceeded to call out shots fired and that he had been hit. During the firefight, Sergeant Anderson was able to relay his exact location and detailed interaction information to the responding units in order for them to remain safe when they arrived on scene. Officer Sporleter was the first unit to arrive on scene, was able to remove Sergeant Anderson from the scene and get him to immediate medical attention. Sergeant Anderson had a plan in place because of his awareness of the officer safety risk involved with the male he was conducting surveillance on. He had arranged to have backup close by and was tactfully aware of his surroundings even after he had been shot and advised he was losing consciousness. He knew he needed to alert other responders of all the information he had, both for their safety and for his own. Due to his preparation, communication, experience, and training, Sergeant Anderson was able to get assistance quickly, and the other responders were able to bring this situation to resolve, all while keeping the surrounding community safe. Sergeant Anderson is truly a credit to this department. His dedication to service is commendable, and we are absolutely pleased to have him back to work.
Also with us this evening, we have Sergeant Anderson's mom and dad here as well, Kristi and Dave. And I just want to say thank you for being here as well. And Sergeant Anderson's wife is here as well, so I think the whole family's here.
Tell you, Sergeant Anderson looked a lot better tonight than he did in the hospital, so it's a treat to have him back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. And thanks to everyone who showed up for that. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Do we have any declarations of conflict, ex parte contact, or site visits? Seeing them, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the July 29th, 2020 City Council meeting, sorry, City Council Workshop. Item B is minutes from the August 4th, 2020 City Council meeting. Item C is payables, July 28th through August 10th, 2020. Item D is cash and investments for June. Item E is grant advisement for Meadow Ridge Tranquil Meadows. Item F is Montrose Tract A release to sale or transfer request. Item G is Berkshire Place subdivision plat application. Item H is Peregrine Place First Edition subdivision plat application. Item I is Community Forest Annexation Reasoned Decision. And item J is Land App Annexation Reasoned Decision.
There is one correction. Shannon has made it to the record, and I've already talked with Councilor Malloy on, at their last meeting with the face mask program that we asked for funding for. Mr. Malloy did vote nay, and it was reflected in the minutes as aye, but it has been corrected.
Yes.
Any other questions on the agenda? I mean, I'm sorry, the consent calendar. Seeing that, I'd entertain a motion. I'd move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Orders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up, I should have mentioned, we do have three public hearings, dinner with fees, forgone taxes, and budget amendments. So if anyone wishes to speak during these public hearings, please fill out the form on the D S and turn them into our clerk. With that, I will open the first public hearing fiscal year 2021 fee schedule.
But that's okay. We'll go without it. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the first and only public hearing I'm going to have for the fees, and we've talked about the fees quite a bit. In your packet, I've tried to highlight what has changed in the yellow versus what it currently is. Let's do a recap of what rates are going to be. The water rates, I propose a 3% increase. Wastewater, based on the FCS group rate study, is 7%. We have revised the model that for reclaimed cap fees for reclaimed water and also for water, we're using the new fee calculation. For reclaimed water, there's going to be an 8.06% increase. Water cap fees is a 4.62% increase. Impact fees, we're using the engineering news record of 1.64%. And sanitation fees, I'm proposing a 1.5% increase based on a series of indexes that we use to calculate for sanitation. And year over year, we've talked about what's that look like for the average homeowner. If they use 5,000 gallons in fiscal year 20, the monthly bill will be $85.45 total. In fiscal year 21, with the proposed rate increases, the monthly bill for using 5,000 gallons of water is $90.15 for a total change of $4.70 total. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions to Jason.
Jason, I'm curious about the impact fees.
Okay.
Increased by 1.644. We talked last, gosh, it's been a while, six months ago, about dramatically changing the impact fees.
Right, and this is why we have in the fee hearing after the budget hearing was, I had anticipated having the impact fees available so I could put it in the free resolution, but they had to hold up with the impact fees, being able to have public hearings for those. So we've had to postpone those, those will be available probably in October. So you'll see me come back with the new impact fees, since they've been revised. I'll be back in, about October with the new impact fees.
So the, what we're voting on tonight, or what we're approving tonight, the 1.64%, won't have an, it won't disallow us from changing those impact fees down the road?
No, I can bring back the impact, as long as I publish a public hearing for the revised fee schedule, whatever the impact fees are, I can bring back, and any other changes that time as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Jason, anyone wishing to testify, Shannon?
We have none.
Well, with that, I will close the public hearing. Council, how would you like to act?
I'd move to approve the fiscal year 2021 fee schedule.
Second.
Second.
Motion seconds, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next public hearing up is the fiscal year 2020 forgone property tax. With that, I'll open the public hearing.
Forgone property taxes has been an animal that I think that is going to revisit in the legislator, legislation. The past years, if I wanted to use forgone, I had to create a resolution that basically beat the drum that the city was going to use it, which we did during the streetlights. Now that the House bill has been changed, where if we want to roll the 3% property tax, we're not going to use, it doesn't automatically roll to forgone. What they've required now is a public hearing before the resolution in order for it to roll, which might catch a lot of cities off guard, because who actually publishes for a public hearing for a resolution? So here we are. This year, the City of Post Falls did not take the 3%, which is allowed for property tax increase. So for fiscal year 2021, the amount of the 3% is $356,247, and the resolution I'm proposing for council's approval, we'll just roll that to forgone to be used in future years if needed.
Any questions to Jason?
Jason, what's our, what's our standing balance in forgone?
It's about 1.6 million.
I guess my concern or my question would be is why do we need to roll over another $365,000? I mean, we're probably never going to take those forgone taxes. I can't even, I couldn't even imagine a situation where we would come back to the citizens of Post Falls and say, well, we didn't take it for 12 years or whatever, but now we're going to hit you with
That's a good point.
6, 7, 10%?
That's a good point. We've talked about also what the, for example, if we used, like, right now, the state of Idaho is proposing the CARES Act, which is for public safety relief or property taxes, which is later in the agenda. We would also look for council support, well, or to not use it, which is about 1.6 million. A lot of that, that money that is offered by the state of Idaho, we have received, well, that it may not be, it may not be allowed in future years. You might have to pay that back. So there would be the funding source for that available to come back if we wanted to use, to repay that money that we got a credit for. So there is options if you wanted to use forgone in the future. It's just banks that if and when you might decide want to, if you want to use it.
And Councilor Wolf, I'd also add that regulations change. And so, for example, when urban renewal districts were closing at one time, they wouldn't let us take the new growth. So in approximately, I'd say 2008 or '09, we used forgone to actually take the new growth on the urban renewal that was closing. It was West Salt East District 1. And so some of the times you use them, even though it really isn't technically a forgone use, you use them because that's how the law allows you to use it. And so we took about $350,000 of forgone, which was really new construction dollars.
But we'd still have to assess against local property owners, right?
Right, and that's what we did. So the assessment was going away for the urban renewal district, and so we replaced it back as a true assessment under the city. And because they wouldn't let us do it as new construction, which is the normal way to do it, we did it using forgone dollars. So it's just a taxing authority is all it is.
And when it's, you're reserving that ability in the event that the future need arises. If you don't pass the resolution now, that is gone due to the legislative changes and updates. I mean, you can, there's a whole list of terribles if you wanted to sit here. You could come up with things that you would have never thought of a year ago that now you're dealing with. And so to have that backstop for the benefit of the public, because you're still limited by the 3% plus your forgone. And so to the extent that your forgone goes away, you're limiting your ability to provide the necessary services. So you never have to use it, but if you don't have it, you can't.
I just wonder why we keep adding to that if we're, we built it up to such, you know, such a volume that, you know, I don't, again, I can't think of a situation where we would go back to the taxing.
We've taken it once, other than the streetlights, we've taken it once, I believe, or once, possibly twice in the 22 years I've been involved with council and mayor. And again, it's very unusual. We don't want to do it. But in the past, we wouldn't have to even have this discussion. It's just something that was a matter of normal practice. And again, I think, if you will, the ability, should something massive arise that we don't have the funding for, and we never want to go back to tax preparers and say, hey, we're going to, you know, assess or collect all the forgone taxes. Although, when there has been discussion at the legislature to eliminate that, and some governmental agencies, cities, counties, et cetera, did in fact take the majority of their forgone taxes at that point. We've not done that, I don't think we'll have, we have an intention of doing it. But to me, it might be fiscally prudent to do so. Appreciate the discussion. Any comments to Jason? Anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
With that, I would close the public hearing. Council?
I would move to approve fiscal year 2021 forgone property tax.
Second.
Motion seconds, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And the last public hearing tonight is the fiscal year 2020 Budget Amendment Number Two. Open that public hearing.
This is, the city had received 1.194 million from the state of Idaho. And what we have decided to do is we're going to split it up over two fiscal years. This fiscal year, we're going to use $300,000 for, let's see, it was for the leave that we offered employees when the COVID-19 crisis hit. And also, we have, we're going to suggest to appropriate $447,200 this year and $447,200 for next year. This is going to cover anything that we had to purchase for the COVID event. One thing we have already submitted reimbursement for was for $50,000 of items such as masks, hand sanitizer, the parks had some equipment that they purchased to sterilize, the playground equipment, those type of items that were allowed to be purchased. We purchased them, we submitted reimbursement, and we had received them. We're still waiting on a submittal for wages that, under this grant, but it seems like that we haven't heard anything back. So I'm imagining we're going to be reimbursed for that. So, and we have to spend these funds by the end of the year. So it looks like we are purchasing and then submitting reimbursement and just splitting them up over two fiscal years. The budget that I brought forward for '21, that money's included in there as well, so.
Question, Jason?
Yes.
Suppose we don't spend the money? We just give it back?
Yeah, it's one of those things where it's just, for COVID-related events, you can use it for salaries, or you can use it for any type of equipment or protective gear. For example, the glass in the lobby for the rotunda, that was one of the items we were going to submit reimbursement for.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
With that, I will close the public hearing. Council?
I'd move to approve the Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Two fiscal year 2020.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Motion passes, thank you. Thanks, Jason. Next item up is unfinished business, returning ordinances, resolutions. And my understanding is we are going to change the order. We are going, and there's a reason, I'm sure someone's going to explain it to me, but we're going to go from item B to item D and then to item C. So with that, the first item up is the Public Safety CARES Act Fund. Mr. Cafferty, I believe.
So a few, gosh, weeks, months ago, it seems like a lifetime ago, on July 17th, we came before you, I came before you, with the proposal from the Governor's Office for accepting the federal CARES Fund dollars, which have now been clarified to be about $1.9 million that the city would be eligible for in order to be used for property tax relief. At that time, I sought your permission and direction to investigate further and to proceed with basically getting in line with the other cities so that the state could evaluate the needs and how those funds would be allocated. Since that time, the state has made a determination that of the amounts eligible and the City of Post Falls would be eligible under the state's calculations for about $1.9 million. It would have to be used for property tax relief. And I, have to be used, sounds heavy-handed. It's a good thing, it's a benefit to the public. The problem that I foresee is the questions that we asked them before we made the request or the statement of intent, and with the statement of intent, and after we submitted the statement of intent, have yet to be answered, and there's still serious concern on my part as to the legitimacy of the interpretation through the state in the use of these funds. Specifically, the Federal CARES Act says it can't be used to substitute taxes, which is exactly what this state's order is called. That's kind of problematic in my mind. And that's kind of where Jason was alluding to earlier. To the extent that, and I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other, you have the memo I submitted, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer that. But the concern would be if the city chooses to go forward, based upon the information that's been provided by the governor and the press and other places, the potential still exists that actions could take place where the city would have to repay those funds back to the federal government. And so that's where your forgone might come into play. That's where Jason was kind of hitting on earlier. That's the type of thing where you didn't anticipate it, you wouldn't want to do it, but in the event that something like that comes up, that's something to be considered. So I prepared the memorandum, kind of laying out where we're at. I'm not looking for a decision tonight. More specifically, I wanted to give you the information that I was able to glean following your direction last time and make myself available for any questions you have at this moment or in the coming days and week, as we anticipate coming before you next council meeting on, I believe it's the 1st of September, for a decision on this whether or not the city wants to take the agreement with the state and be bound by the terms of the CARES Act and the state's requirement that those funds be spent for property tax relief, or if the city wants to forego that and move along that line, so.
Thank you. I'll start.
Okay.
My thought is, we lose nothing by riding with it for the next week or two to see what happens. We've not committed, there's no exposure. My personal choice would be to let staff continue to follow this and prior to our next, at our next meeting, hopefully we'll have some answers to the questions. What I find interesting is reading through all the information that Mr. Cafferty provided, and you provided plenty, was that
It didn't sit on our hands, you know.
No, but it's interesting to me, because the intent is very good. You know, property tax relief. But you go back to what the Treasury said, or the Fed has said, is that it can't be used for tax relief. Or, you know, the state is trying to promote its use for something that is not allowed, number one. Number two, all these questions that have been asked, and they've come back, what I read in the memo and the information you provided, is that the interpretation is, yeah, it's okay, but we're not going to get it. it's okay, but we're not going to get a definitive answer from Treasury, we're not going to get any additional, if we have received any definitive answers from the state. To me, it's almost a crapshoot. You roll the dice and see if it works, and we can provide property tax relief and not get caught down the road, it's, I, I think it's really, who knows, 50/50 maybe? So, I've got some real concerns with the lack of information, the lack of answers that we have received, or not received, and the potential impact it could have. That being said, again, I like the idea of being able, being able to provide some property tax relief, so my druthers would be just ride with it for the next few weeks.
Well, and that, that's what we anticipate, is, you know, no action tonight, but wanted to present this to you, get any direction, if you wanted me to go look up some more information. Uh, we have been keeping pretty close tabs on it as far as trying to find anything, and not much has come out in the way of any definitive answers to it, as it notes in there. I mean, there's the lawsuit from Bonner County going on, there's-
Has there been any additional information, the letter that was penned by the prosecutor in LaTox?
The 26, 26 county prosecutors. Uh, no, no response.
Okay, thanks.
As of last week, when I talked to the LaTox County Prosecutor's Office.
Maybe you can help me understand the situation a little bit, because I guess I read it a little differently. The way I read through this is, what the state is saying is, if your city had substantially more expenses, primarily in payroll for public health and safety employees, that rather than take, uh, or increase your, your taxes, your property taxes, state's saying, we will give you that money, so don't go out and raise that $1.9 million to pay for the expenses that you had, we'll give you that money, so you don't have to go out and increase taxes. Am I reading it wrong?
That is basically what, that's the way it's intended, is that you substitute the federal funds, excuse me, for your, part of the problem is, the FAQs from the treasury say you can't use these funds to substitute for, or to compensate for taxes as a revenue source, which it would be, I think. The other problem is in the attorney general's opinion that, remember when we read her last time, came out during the meeting, um, that says, in addition to the taxing issue, which wasn't addressed or wasn't raised in the question asked to the attorney general's office, it also articulates the distinction between substantially different, meaning you have to, this has to be something that you weren't going to spend the money on before. So, kind of like, uh, some of the costs that Jason was mentioning, the PPE or personal protective equipment, additional things like that, driving around, ah, driving around, that's a poor way to state that, patrolling through law enforcement, responding to calls, that's what law enforcement does, that's what the budget's for, that's not substantially different. And so we're, we're lacking the information and the facts to substantiate why we should use federal taxes instead of local taxes for the benefit of what we put in our budget before, because it hasn't substantially changed, or at least, we're challenged with pointing to facts that would be able to be articulated to support such a assertion.
That's, that's again, my, my next question, and that is-
So I'm going to go back to your first question, I'm sorry, counsel, if you ask if this was for additional, so we don't take an additional $1.9 million in taxes, no.
Oh, no.
What they requested was, what is your current, from March to end of June, cost for your public safety personnel, what is your estimated through the end of the year, so it's your current budget, not additional taxes that would be above and beyond the normal budget.
So we haven't really had any substantially increase in payroll, I guess I'm pointing at, looking at chief, so we really haven't had that, to say that we had to spend $1.9 million extra because of COVID, or we expect to expend that extra money between now and the end of the year.
That's correct.
So, that's where it could get kind of sneaky, if they come back and say, well, you didn't really need that money, so we want it back.
Right.
Even if we do take the money, we could keep it in a, could we not keep it in a, um, separate account?
You could do that, the potential exists, I've heard it raised.
You can't, because you're going to have to expend it, I'm sorry, you can't. If we don't receive it in, in taxes, which we won't, we can't put it in a separate account because we will have to spend it on salaries.
But it's money that we wouldn't have spent, we would have normally spent otherwise.
It's money we would have spent on salaries, but we're no longer going to get that money from our taxpayers, so we're now going to get it through this program. If the program's found illegal or deemed illegal, we won't get it from there either.
Because we won't be able to save it, what she's saying is, the city's budget will be short $1.9 million, because those federal funds are included in our budget such that we can't set it aside because we need it to operate, that's what our budget's based upon. And so that's part of the problem and why you can't hold on to it, is because it's in your budget to be spent for these things, that's what it's going to be spent for, and-
But we've already budgeted that money to replace it.
We have, it's in our current budget and in our future budget, but the property taxpayers will be provided that relief, so we have to pay it back through there.
Okay.
So, in the end, it will not provide us any additional dollars, they are saying they'll give us a 3% admin-
3% administrative cost.
So there'll be a 3% that is above and beyond the $1.9 million, which is simply a replacement, so our overall budget will remain exactly the same, and we'll add that 3%.
Whether we take the money or not.
Whether we take the money or not, if we don't take the money, then the 3% wouldn't be added, but-
And, and I apologize, I didn't answer your question, I'm glad Andrew corrected me. So, the program requires that we set our budget, and then they will take our budget reduced by the amount of their funding. Plus, on top of that, in order to be eligible for the program, the city has to agree not to take any part of its 3%, which the city's already not doing, so that's not a significant challenge to the city or the taxpayers. But it's that substitution of the funding that the city would need to spend in the coming year, and in addition to the need to spend those funds for the budgeting purposes or their budgeted purpose, there's also the possibility, how real it is, I, I mean, I'm not wanting to be all doom and gloom, but the potential is you've defrauded the federal government by taking their funds, saying that you were doing something that is questionable at best, let's say.
Okay. That helps me understand it better, I guess I'm with the mayor, as far as let's just hold off on this until we, some of these things are resolved. I guess I'm leaning, yeah, I'm kind of leaning towards let's just not even bother with it.
So John, just the state already has the money right now, so they're just waiting for the cities to file for official reimbursement. If it was found illegal, who would file the suit against the state of Idaho? Would that be the Justice Department or the Treasury Department? So, would they sue the state of Idaho to get the money back, or would they sue each individual city or county that took the money?
There's a couple of ways it could unfold. At the moment, Bonner County is suing the governor and the state of Idaho on this program, um, to get it declared invalid. If that happens, it has to be unwound, and those funds would have to go back. Additionally, you have the, um, federal government, you could have a whistleblower, you, there's also the, I want to say the controller, but that's not the right term, but the oversight, excuse me, the oversight of the federal funding could go back to that. Additionally, there's the, the possibility for other harmed individuals, such as other states that should have gotten the funding but for the fact that it was misallocated. I don't know that that is a very high likelihood, I'd say it's probably very remote, but those are the ways that, most notably, would probably come back through the federal government, through the oversight, when and if that were to occur, and also potentially through, um, the clawing back of future grant funds, or making the city potentially ineligible for those, kind of like they do when you owe the federal government tax, or money, and you don't get your tax returns back, it's kind of along those same lines.
And the Cooney County Treasurer's Office has reached out to us, let us know they will not be able to post this credit on the billings to the individuals, so the program says that you'll get a bill, Alan Wolf receives a bill in the mail, owes $3,000 in taxes, he's getting a $200 credit. They will not be able to provide that, what you're going to see is you owe $2,800, and there'll be an insert saying some credit of some sort was applied. Along with that, if the Bonner County, is it Bonner or Boundary?
Bonner.
County suit comes forward and it's found invalid, they at some point may hold this program, and, and if, let's say it happens in October before the assessment notices have gone out to the taxpayers, this credit program would just be removed wholly from the program, and we would be, at that point, still whole as a city. If it happens after those notices have gone out, then we would have to find that money to fund that $1.9 million in our budget in some other format.
And the 3% forgone was 300,000, so it'd take a lot of forgone to try to cover.
But you wouldn't have that even available to next year. And the 3% I was referring to is they're going to give us some kind of administrative fee on the 1.9 million, and I think it's either 3% or 5%, something like that.
I believe it was 3%.
3%, so, there's two 3%'s we're talking about.
What's the possibility of fines or penalties if this is found to be an improper use?
If it's found to be improper, I'd say there's a high likelihood of that. It's within their power to do it, how's that?
If they can, they will.
Yeah.
Has anybody tweeted at Real Donald Trump to get any clarification, or?
Um, if you read through the governor's notice, or his, the August 6th, um, memo, or order, or whatever we title it, it states in there that the governor's office has met with the president, has met with the treasury representatives, and they have made comments that it was okay to do it.
Comments?
Yes, and it's been in-
Not on the record?
It's been in the, does it say the media, or, it's been out there that it's okay, but there's nothing in writing, and no one is willing to, it, put their proverbial money where their mouth is, so. Everybody says it's okay, but no one is willing to write it down.
You okay, Joe? Carrie?
See, that's a deal breaker for me, that no one will put it in writing, you know, if it sounds too good to be true, it is, and we don't have, we don't have the need, our budget is already there, a balanced budget is already provided for everything we need. And without anything in writing, it is a gamble, you know, it is like rolling the dice. The thing is, is like us rolling the dice, and it's not our money, except that we're all taxpayers here in Post Falls, but we're rolling the dice with forgone taxes, with, with the taxpayer's money, so while it sounds great to have tax relief, and like I say, I'm one of the people that would get tax relief, because, like I say, all of us pay taxes here, but, uh, yeah. If no one will put it in writing-
If you read the executive order 202015 from the governor, there's a few key points in there that are maybe worth repeating. One of them is, about three-quarters of the way down on the first page, "The U.S. Treasury Secretary and Senior Staff of the U.S. Treasury are quoted in various outlets stating that the presumption of substantial dedication to COVID efforts exists regardless of whether or not the payroll costs are accounted for in the budget most recently approved." They're quoted, but they don't say it.
In various outlets, yeah.
I mean, they don't, they don't document that, they're not willing to go by that.
Yeah.
And then there was another one, um, that mentions that they had met and discussed it, but that's as far as it went.
Well, that's what I say, it's, it's a gamble, but I, I see no risk in writing with it till our next meeting, if everyone concurs.
And we'll bring back additional information on who is or is not taking it, there are a few, um, decisions that will be made between now and our next meeting by other, um, agencies, and so we'll have that data for you. It doesn't make things better or worse, it's just knowledge for you to have.
And just for everyone's information, I've received phone calls and emails criticizing us because we've had these discussions, and you've got to take it, so.
Yeah.
Well, and I just want to make the council and the mayor know that I'm available, if you know of anything, if you have anything, if you want anything prior to that September 1st that will aid you in making your determination, that's, I want to make sure I make that available to you.
I want it in writing.
So do I, I keep asking.
I just have, I guess, two other concerns along the same line, and I'll be done. One is, we have an election coming up in November, which could change this whole thing, or how they view this at a federal level. And number two, if we provide tax relief now for this group of citizens, and then we find out next year or the year after, we have to pay it back, then we got, we may have some different citizens that get, have to pay extra to pay back the 1.9 million that weren't even here to take advantage of it, so. I'm done.
We'll give it time and see what happens.
Yeah.
Thanks, John, good information.
Thank you.
Next item is, uh, Park and Recreation Master Plan Update. Brian.
Brian Myers, Parks Manager, here at the City of Post Falls, uh, going to introduce Art Thatcher with Green Play Consulting. They have been our project consultant on this project now since this past May, and , uh, we're wrapping up down the, down the home stretch with this plan, and he's going to give a brief overview of where we've been, and the recommendations and, and goals that are coming out of this plan, uh, for your consideration, and, um, go from there. So with that, Art Thatcher?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. Um, as Brian said, I'm Art Thatcher, I'm one of the principals with Green Play, and we've had the pleasure of, uh, working on your, your Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update, um, for the past year. So the, the master plan update really is, is for us to create and for the, the city to create this blueprint, um, for providing quality recreation services, parks, green spaces, facilities and programs for the, for the community. One of the things that, that we look at is we know that park systems and parks and recreation provide benefits to, to the people in your community, and we're really comfortable with the, the social aspects of those, the, the recreation play, education, as well as the environmental. The things that have really come into play more recently, and, and we've known for, you know, a couple of decades, is that they also provide great health benefits to the community, and through this COVID, we've noticed a, a great increase in, um, in use of parks now that, that people are being open, so that community, um, health, that mental health and that physical health, as well as economically, so the economy. So we know that it attracts tourism, parks and, and recreation attract tourism, they increase land values, and they also are a real economic driver for communities. One of the things that, that has been around for a while is this concept of placemaking. We know that, you know, over half of the globe currently live in cities, and these cityscapes have really grown kind of organically, really not looking at the well-being of those who live within them. And so they were designed on quantity of dwellers, and not on the quality, um, of the dwelling or the surroundings. So placemaking is this effort to strengthen this connection between people and, and the communities and the places that they share. It really looks at your community's assets, the inspiration and the potential of the community, and it's an intentionally, it creates public spaces, um, for health, happiness and, and well-being. So really, one of the things that we, that we see is this change in economic development from where big business would come into a community, and then the workforce would follow that. That has really shifted, um, especially with the, the increase in the baby boomers becoming empty nesters, and also in the, in the millennials. They're really looking for places where they can live, work and play, and, and be within walking distance to the things that they'd like, those amenities, um, within the community, so really making livable spaces within your community. So again, um, kind of looking at Post Falls, and you're a really, an outdoor economy, and recreation plays a major, major, um, role in the lives of your citizens, and so, these are many of the ways that recreation impacts your community. Talent attraction, looking at your, attracting and retaining your workforce, tourism, brand recognition, um, people know, you know, the, the assets that you have here, creates a healthy community, creates attractive environments, and also is an, is an economic driver, both for, um, larger businesses as well as your entrepreneurs, and, and those businesses that support recreation and, and the parks. So one of the things that we know is through this COVID, that recreation has really changed. Um, you know, we know that the shape of parks have changed, we're really not going to be using parks the way that we have used them in the past, um, the shape of recreation has changed. You know, the, the way that we do programming and the way that programming is, is given to our citizens is also changing, um, with social distancing and, and those things. Also, the business of parks and recreation is changing. Where, where we had depended on fees and charges, um, we, we've saw, um, a major change in, in that, and we're seeing some of those, some, some of those, um, kind of effects down the line. Also, we, we've become a greater oriented towards community health and towards equity. Many parks and recreation departments really now are, um, are being health, health providers, food- food security, and, and hunger prevention areas. And then finally, social justice and racial equity, kind of looking at, again, providing recreation for everybody in the community and having equal access. And so through this master planning process, as, as Brian said, we started with our strategic kickoff. We did community and stakeholder engagement. We did a survey. We did a needs assessment and looked at, we did an inventory and level of service analysis. We, we came up with our findings and drafted our recommendations. And now we've been through several processes of action plans, and we're here now with the, with the final plan. And so we kind of looked, took this snapshot of the community as we began to look at this, at this master plan update. And one of the things that we looked at is your, is your demographics, and looked at it broken down by age. And the, the two things that I point out is that your population, 0 to 14 and 25 to 40, 45, is higher than the U.S. average. This speaks to two things. One, you have a, a younger generation moving in, yet you're retaining those. And then you also have a lot of young families within your community. So through this public process, we did public engagement we held in June. We did focus groups, stakeholder meetings. We did leadership interviews. We did some community workshops, and then we finished all of that with a public presentation. We use, as we went through that, one of the things that we came up with were we asked the, those folks that participated what their priorities would be. And so connecting the community to parks physically, emotionally, and socially, maintaining what you currently have, keeping your level of service and your quality up, improving your marketing and branding, expanding access to the water, finding your, this balance between natural areas and developed amenities, looking at land acquisition and preservation, being proactive in that area, growing your programs, your events, your adventure programs, your camps, providing new amenities, dog parks, splash pads, pickleball courts, destination playgrounds. Those things were some that were mentioned. Building, looking at building a new recreation center, possibly with an aquatic facility on it. And then also finding dedicated funds to help support your operations and, and your growth as time goes by. So we took all of that information, and we did a needs assessment survey. We mailed out 4,500 random surveys to the community. We got 566 back, which is about 12 and 1/2%. We typically look at about a 10% return. And so 12 and 1/2 was really a great return. And then we also put that same survey out on the website as an open link, so anybody could participate. And we got another 185 surveys back from that. And so as we looked at that, some of the questions that we asked were around the, the purpose of the department. What are the things that, that they should be doing? And so providing clean, well-maintained parks and facilities, promoting healthy, active lifestyles, and connecting people to nature were the top three. We use a five-point scale, five being very important, one being not important. So very important, important, and somewhat important, that 5, 4, 3. So you can see, these are all rated in that, in that greater than four, almost five. So we also asked on that same scale, the importance of, of facilities and, to the, to the community. And so you can see that community and neighborhood parks, trails and pathways, open space, access to the water, and then Post Falls Community Forest were the, those top five most important to the community. We also asked about programs using that same scale. And so the most important were special events as your top, sporting programs, youth programs, and then aquatic programs as your top four. So we asked, one of the final things we asked was to tell us what your top priority would be. Of all of these that we, that we mentioned, how would you rank your, your number one priority? And so 25% of the respondents said an aquatic facility, or aquatic facilities, increased water access, trail connectivity, additional open space, and then regional trail connectivity. So you can see trails are, are very important to, to your community. So as I mentioned, we also did an inventory of all of your parks. We had the previous inventory, so we went out and, and looked at all of your, at all of your facilities, looked at your parks, your trails, your playgrounds. We did an inventory. And as we looked at the, the previous inventory and what you currently have, we noticed that you've really made some great additions and upgrades to your system over the, over the last five years since we did the, the original master plan. There are still additional opportunities for you to celebrate the water and increase your views and your access. You have limited indoor recreation opportunities. Most of your parks are very well-maintained. There is some deferred maintenance that, that needs to be addressed. Your branding is inconsistent with some of your signage and your comfort features. There's also inconsistency in your restrooms throughout the system. Some of your playground structures are outdated and need to be updated. And then there's opportunity to increase your ADA access throughout the system. So as we looked at that, we, we mapped each of your, your parks. We did an inventory, and not only looked at the quantity of components within your park, but also looked at the quality of each of those components. So we rated them on a scale of 1 to 3, 1 being that they're not functioning the way they were originally designed to function. So they may need major repairs, and they may need to be replaced. A 2 is that they're functioning the way they were designed to function, may need a little bit of maintenance. And then a 3 is they're functioning above. So it may be a brand-new playground that you've put in, brand-new picnic shelter in the facility. And so we provided an atlas to, to the department with that. And so from, from our inventory, we began to look at, and we began to look at access within the community. And we, we look at several different functions. And walkable is, is the major way that we kind of looked at that. Using a half-mile radius, you know, looking at the, the 10-minute walk to, to a recreation component. And so you can see the darker orange is, is greater access. And so the lighter the orange gets, the less walkable access there is to a recreation component within a half-mile of, of a resident. So we took that, and we also looked at, we, we looked at that walkable access to an indoor facility. And, and you can see, we not only used your, your facilities, but we also looked at other service providers, the Boys and Girls Clubs. We looked at the schools to, to get a really good picture, so that we weren't kind of leaving out areas that were being, that access was being provided by other service providers. Again, using that kind of orange and that half-mile radius. We also looked at trail access and trailheads using loop park, loop, loop trails that are within your parks, as well as your, your community and regional trail system. And then lastly, we went down as far as to look at access to playgrounds. Again, looking at other service providers, the, the brighter the orange, the more access you have to, to playgrounds within the community. And so we, we gathered all that information and looked at all of that. And we use a, a tool called our Key Issues Matrix to, to begin to look at some, some key opportunities. And as we looked at those, maintaining what the city currently has, maintaining that level of service and quality, increasing your trail and pathway connectivity, growing your programs, expanding water access, finding the balance between natural areas and developed amenities, branding, wayfinding, creating this downtown gathering space. We also looked at identifying dedicated funds to support the operations and growth, maintaining, expanding your partnerships, providing new amenities, adding additional open space, building a recreation center, aquatic facility, increasing your staffing to, to maintain and provide your current level of service, and then increasing access to active recreation and athletic facilities to, to support programs that are in demand and through your population growth. And so we also, when we looked at, at funding strategies, worked with, with the department, looked at, at other work that we'd done around the state and around the country. And so some of those potential funding strategies that, that we looked at were, and exploring some alternative funding sources that strategically align with your target services. Those urban renewal funds, impact fee revenues for growth through shared bond, bond repayments, expanding your alternative funding strategies through grants, land and water conservation funds, CDBG, those things, expanding additional community partnerships, expanding your sponsorships, considering a bond referendum to expand or to build new facilities, establishing a state-of-the-industry cost recovery and financial sustainability program. You do a really, the department does a really good job in, in their cost recovery, but really looking at, kind of creating a philosophy and a, and a process around that. Pursuing land dedication and also extractions on annexation are some of those funding strategies. And so we take all of those, and we began to look at and develop goals and objectives. And as we develop those, our main primary focus areas are on maintaining, sustaining, and improving your system. And we, and we develop action plan, action steps within those. And those action steps have a timeframe of short term, so up to three years, midterm, four to six, and then long term, seven to 10 years. And so we developed four goals. The first is to improve and expand your facilities and your amenities. And we have five objectives under those. And then there are a number of action steps that I'm not going to go over this evening. They're in the, in, in the document that you were given. So the first is to expand your, your greenways, your pathways, and your trail connectivity, continuing to maintain and improve your existing facilities and amenities, expanding open space in parks to meet your current level of service, making improvements to and, or, and/or replacing some of your existing facilities and amenities, developing new amenities at existing parks based on current level of service analysis and demand, continuing to improve your access to programs and facilities, upgrading your convenience and customer service amenities, restrooms, shade structures, those things, and then also obtaining the, the BNSF rail, rail line. Excuse me. The second goal was to continue to improve organizational efficiency. And the three objectives there were to continue to enhance your internal and external communication, staffing appropriately to meet your current demands, and then growth in the, in the future, and then expanding your partnerships to increase access to recreation opportunities throughout the community. Our third goal is to continue to improve your programs and your service delivery. And those three objectives are exploring community events based on demand and, and trends. So looking at those, those expansions, developing additional recreation opportunities, and then working with other service providers to, to develop programs and services to meet demand, trends, and facility designs, knowing that the department can't be everything to everybody. And so our final goal was to increase financial opportunities. And so kind of reviewing your existing fees and restructure to meet your current needs and, and future funding realities, exploring those additional funding opportunities, exploring opportunities to increase your sponsorships, and then refining your pricing policy and practice, and developing a resource allocation and cost recovery philosophy. And so those are the, the goals and objectives. And as I said, we have many action steps within that. And so I'm, I'm available. I think Brian's also available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. It's good information. I know it was a long time to put that together, so we appreciate your assistance. Comments, questions?
Steve?
So is there anything, when you looked at the parks we had, upcoming projects, so have you given any input into how to pri, prioritize them according to the data that you got from the citizens? Because we've got several park projects kind of on the books, and then you got feedback from the citizens.
Yes.
So did you make any recommendations on kind of a priority level according to the data that you got from the citizens, how to proceed in the next, say, 10 years or 15 years?
Yes, we have. We, we've discussed those, your, your current projects that are in the works, and how they relate to the community needs assessment.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you. Seeing that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Do we need a motion on that now?
Do we need a motion on one?
Are you wanting to adopt it?
Yes. So at the Park and Rec Commission meeting at the end of July, they recommended this for adoption by council. So it's gone through a Park and Rec Commission and been vetted by them. We presented at the last council meeting to make you aware that this was out there, and they had already seen it at that point in time. So.
We need a motion to-
So what I understand from the clerk is that this will come back at a future council meeting. This is the presentation, kind of like a resolution or ordinance. It's a presentation, and they'll come back with the documentation for adoption at the future meeting.
So beans, it was labeled an action item. Do we need to direct staff to do so?
I think you'd need to move, motion to move forward.
I would move that we direct staff to move forward with the Park and Recreation Master Plan Update.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion.
Senator, what are we bringing forward?
Roll call, please.
Okay. Well?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be back at a future meeting.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you all very much.
So now we are skipping down to item D, Resolution Pleasant View Deterioration.
I would move to approve the resolution Pleasant View District D, what is it?
Deterioration.
Deterioration.
Do we get the presentation first?
I think we have the presentation first.
I have a brief presentation for you. I'm going to keep it as brief as possible.
Is this it?
That's, you, you are, you are good. You've got it. So we-
That's brief.
Bob Seale, Community Development Director. So at a previous meeting back earlier in the year, it was determined that we were going to be looking at Pleasant View Corridor for, for purposes of establishing an urban renewal district. The first step in that process is to do an eligibility study to determine whether or not it would qualify for an urban renewal district. So we hired that out. That study has been done. That study is in your packet. And I'm going to kind of move on here. As you can see, it shows the Pleasant View Corridor plus an area on Prairie. The land that is indicated on the map is essentially the land that we are, that we, that is the land that was studied for the eligibility study. It is still being determined as to the, the boundaries, as to what would be proposed for the urban renewal district. But the focus remains the same. We're looking at this area for an urban renewal district that may help with higher job creation and improvements to the land, and improvements of the higher density, better use, higher, higher use of the land. It is near major, major corridors, I-90 and State Highway 53. Pleasant View serves as a principal arterial or a major corridor for KMPU. I can't remember exactly how it's determined. Post Falls has done many urban renewal districts in the past, and many of them have been very successful. We have closed some. Many remain open. Part of establishing the urban renewal district, well, I guess I'll get to that in a minute, is to, it needs to be, the areas within the city have to be less than 10% of the assessed property value. Those that are in the urban renewal district, it was determined that this one still keeps it below that threshold. The eligibility study does note that of the factors that are within the state statutes, there are 28 eligibility factors that did, that, that this district does possess. All we need technically is one to determine that it would be eligible. And those eligibility factors do lie in all three segments within the code.
This is on the deterioration resolution, right?
This is on, this is on the deterioration resolution, yes, indicating that there are, that it meets factors, and that it is eligible. And that's what it calls out, yes. As an example, this is the one example that we, that we have in here, looking at the, at the detrimental, or sorry, the deterioration. You know, it is a, it is a poor street network through that area. It's only a two-lane road, somewhat dilapidated. The intersections are subpar. It is relatively unsafe and an incomplete network of roadways through that area. There's high-rated traffic accidents, currently no sewer access. It's over the aquifer. This leads to additional septic tanks that are leaching into the aquifer. So we try and want to take care of those type of health issues. And it ultimately constrains the city capacity in that area to draw, draw industry. Deteriorated area eligibility categories, look at the predominance of defective or inadequate street layout, faulty lot layout in relation to size, adequacy, accessibility, or usefulness. street layout, faulty lot layout in relation to size, adequacy, accessibility, or usefulness, obsolete plating like large lots or odd lines. Diversity of ownership, in this situation, there are eight different owners on 19 lots. Insanitary conditions, specifically the lack of the sanitary sewer, or it's kind of a combination of those factors. Under the segment two, it looks at the deteriorating area. And again, it kind of covers similar situations, the predominance of defective or inadequate street layouts, faulty lot layouts, relation to size, adequacy, accessibility, or usefulness, diversity of ownership, insanitary, unsafe conditions, or a combination of the factors. So there were nine factors within those five confirmed categories. And then finally, we have the competitively disadvantaged border areas, looking at inequities or disparities in income taxes, inequities or disparities in unique geographic features, ability to attract private investment, business, or commercial development. In reading the report, it overwhelmingly concludes that it is an eligible area. It meets both spirit and letter of the state. The city and the URA have an excellent success in the past with urban renewal districts. And this is kind of looking at this Pleasant View Corridor as potentially the last best place in Post Falls as the, as an industrial area. And the demand for the URD is clear at this time with an increase, looking at those, at that corridor, especially with the intersections posed to be improved up at Highway 53. We're going to be looking at it, at a, becoming more of a major corridor between 90 and 53. And, you know, this is a good opportunity, and we don't want to lose out on the land being developed at a lower density within the county. Kind of looking again just at the map, I just wanted to indicate. So this is the map that was looked at. And we have some areas within the, I wonder if I can, up in this area that are going to be potentially removed during the feasibility aspect of this and actually establishing the lot lines. This area up here has already started for development in the county at larger five-acre parcels for single-family housing up in here. So this will be likely to come out of this urban renewal district. We are also still trying to determine exactly what is happening in this area with the county property. That's the transfer station. We may be shrinking that down to a sliver. We're trying to, again, figure this out, and that will come out through the feasibility study, which is the next piece on the agenda, looking at that. The feasibility study will look at a couple, potentially a couple of different options. It may look at the difference between, is it feasible to do an urban renewal district with just this corridor down here? And what, and is it, or is it only feasible if we include the additional lands north of Prairie as well? So it's kind of going to be looking at those two scenarios, one without the lands north of Prairie, one with lands south or without it. So that'll be kind of ferreted out through the feasibility study and the things. Do you have any questions on the eligibility study?
So right now, you talked about the eligibility study.
Correct.
Right now, we're talking about the declaration of deterioration.
Absolutely.
That is the eligibility study.
That is the eligibility study. So that's, that's what the resolution is before you, is to, is to accept the eligibility study and declaring that the area is deteriorating and that it does meet those criteria that were established within the study. Again, it's just a step one. That moves us into the next phase of actually looking at this in a clearer, clearer way to figure out how it can work and how it can be developed.
Any questions? Process. I just want to, I'm just curious again on that whole thing with the county. That doesn't come into this particular issue right now?
This is not an issue right now.
Okay. Okay. Now I think we're ready.
I'd move to approve the resolution for Pleasant View District deterioration.
Second. Motion second, further discussion.
As I said, I don't, I don't like that state law allows anybody to consider bare ground deteriorated because it always is what it's always been. But the purpose of this is, does this qualify under state law? So I'll support it, but at the same time, I think it's goofy. That's the state legislatures' problem.
Appreciate it.
I can add a quick little comment, if you don't mind on that. So the state law does speak to agricultural land that hasn't been, that has been cultivated in the last three years. And we do have consent from two properties that have been cultivated, that have cultivated in the last three years that we can address their property in this manner.
And motion second. And for the questions, roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. So the next item up now is the Pleasant View Urban Renewal District Feasibility Study.
So I don't have a presentation for that one. I just wanted to have this one addressed first so that we could be determined that it was eligible before we jump to requesting to do a feasibility study. So before you, you've got the staff report and the contract with Welsh Comer and Heartland to do the feasibility study. This would be looking at the site development, market analysis, and financial review of the site, of the area, including the development strategy and kind of looking at what route we would likely be going in order to see this development happen and if it is feasible within that corridor, within the, you know, 20-year specified time that it...
And it would address the property on the northern part of that?
It will address the property on the northern side of it.
I guess that's my, that's my biggest question here is, is there, I mean, the county's already kind of come out and said they're not real interested in being part of this? So is there, I mean, that's what I read. Did I read wrong?
That's not accurate. So, yeah, the county has already agreed to do a joint powers on this.
Okay.
The one thing they want to ensure is same as the tech park, that the intent is to annex the property into the city. But they are cooperating with us on the joint powers agreement to create the district, and they're also looking at the connectivity on their parcel and what they can do to assist us on that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was, wasn't totally wrong on that. So I guess I was. Thank you. Questions or problem on that? So you need a motion to...
To...
To the contract?
Yes. Just on the...
To approve the Pleasant View Urban Renewal District Feasibility Study contract.
No, I was, I was moving my hand.
You have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Orders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Now we're down to item E, the resolution on the fiscal 2021 fee schedule.
Move to approve the fiscal year 2021 fee schedule.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item up is the motion passes. Next item up, resolution fiscal year 2021 forgone property tax.
Move to approve the resolution fiscal year 2021 forgone property tax.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next up is the ordinance on Tolliners easement vacation.
Move to place the ordinance Tolliners easement vacation on its first and only reading while under suspicion of the rules.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Cafferty.
Tollamore's easement vacation.
Excuse me. Can I, is it Tolliners or Tollamore? I want to make sure we have the right ones. Tolliners?
Tolliners. I'm sorry. I've said what I thought it was, not what it said it is.
Thank you.
Tolliners easement vacation. An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for the vacation of an easement situated on the side and back lines of Lot 13, Block 1 of the Forest Glen subdivision in the city of Post Falls, as described herein, providing for disposition of the vacated easement, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing an effective date, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to approve the ordinance Tolliners easement vacation to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is the ordinance, community forest annexation.
Move to place the ordinance, community forest annexation on its first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Orders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you, Mr. Cafferty.
Annexation and zone classification of property. That portion of Sections 4, 5, 8, and 9, Township 50 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, comprising 437 acres, generally located south of the Spokane River, north of West Riverview Drive, and west of Quailam Park. That is the title. An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the State of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately 437 acres located in portions of Sections 4, 5, 8, and 9, Township 50 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, as fully described in Exhibit A to this ordinance, and zoning the annexed property public reserve, PR in print, providing for amendment of the official zoning map, and providing for an effective date thereof.
Move to approve the ordinance, community forest annexation to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And the last item up tonight, under ordinances, is fiscal year 2020 budget amendment number two.
Move to place the ordinance fiscal year 2020 budget amendment number two on its first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, amending the annual appropriations ordinance 1390 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenues and to authorize expenditure of previously unbudgeted fund balance, increasing and establishing the appropriations for expenditures in various departments and funds, providing that the tax levy upon taxable property within the city is not affected hereby, providing that all ordinances in conflict herewith are superseded by this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, and providing that the ordinance shall be effective upon its publication date.
Move to approve the ordinance fiscal year 2020 budget amendment number two to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. We do have one item, Spokane Street and Prairie Avenue improvements. Mr. Paulus.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. Back in May of this year, engineering staff brought before you the Spokane Street and Prairie Avenue Improvement Project, and we received approval from you to contract with JUB engineers to begin the design of that project. With that project, we were first tying in a previously designed JUB engineering project, which was the rehabilitation of Spokane Street from Poline Avenue to Grange Avenue. That road work would include the rehabilitation of the deteriorating pavement, put in curb, gutter, sidewalks on both sides of the street. With the rest of the project that JUB is currently designing, it includes restriping Spokane Street from Grange Avenue to Prairie Avenue, putting in missing improvements where they exist, rehabilitating sections of pavement, and completing safety improvements at the Union Pacific Railroad crossing of Spokane Street. It also includes the realignment of the intersection of Spokane Street at Prairie Avenue. This provides a secondary access to the Crown Point subdivision, which is necessary to help relieve congestion in the area and improve safety. The work would also include the construction of either a roundabout or a traffic signal at this intersection. Also in this intersection would be the extension of a short piece of sanitary sewer and the removal of the Grayling lift station, which is immediately to the right of the stop sign and getting that offline. That was a temporary lift station constructed back around 2002 or 2003. The last part of the project is the widening and rehabilitation of Prairie Avenue from Spokane Street, approximately a half mile to the west, which would get it to the Chase Road Roundabout. It would involve widening of the roadway, rehabilitation of the deteriorating pavement, putting in curb and gutter, and putting in missing portions of pedestrian facilities and roadway illumination. As far as project schedule, right now, we are on schedule with going out to bid with Phase 1 construction, and I'm going to be asking for your approval on that this evening. And I'll go into a little bit more detail on that in just a little bit. The engineer is completing a traffic analysis of a roundabout versus traffic signal. We're trying to look 20 years in advance to make sure we put in the right device for long-term needs and not put in something that needs to be torn out 10 years because we didn't size it correctly. Traffic counts have been done, and they are finalizing their analysis right now. In September of this year, we would like to open an award contract on the Phase 1 improvements pending your approval. And then we would also be starting the public improvement portion of the project, which is putting out some flyers to the public, putting up a webpage on the city's website as to both the Phase 1 and the rest of the Phase 2 improvements associated with the project. Construction of Phase 1 would occur in October and November of this year. And then over the course of the winter, we'd finish the design of the Phase 2 improvements, go out to bid in March 2021. And again, that would be to build all those improvements previously mentioned. And then we'd see construction of the Phase 2 improvements starting around May of next year. So in the original contract, there was two items going on in Phase 1. One of them was to do the improvements at the railroad crossing. Part of the reason for that was earlier this year, the city entered into an agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad for an at-grade crossing improvement. That contract or that agreement became effective April 14 of this year. And a subclause of that says that we have to finish the work within the railroad right-of-way itself by April 14 of 2021. So we needed to get that portion under construction this fall. The other portion we were looking at initially was the realignment, or at least a temporary realignment, to allow for full access to the Crown Point subdivision at Spokane Street until we got the rest of the project built. We're pulling that piece out for two reasons. One, when we started to take a look at the improvements necessary to get a temporary short-term access for that subdivision, the cost versus the benefit became questionable. There's a number of improvements that we had put in, but a good portion of those would have to be torn out in a mere nine months down the road. We didn't think that was a wise thing to do. The other item was, there's some, some substantial underground utilities, in particular Frontier, now Zipley Communications, that would need to be relocated, and they were not sure if they could mobilize their staff to get their facilities relocated in a timely fashion for construction in October and November of this year. So what we're looking at with Phase 1 improvements and looking for you to, um, authorize us to go out to bid this coming Friday with a bid opening set for September 4th, is the area kind of highlighted in blue at the railroad crossing. Within the railroad right-of-way itself, we would be putting the pedestrian facilities across the railroad crossing. We'd be constructing the missing sh- pieces of curb and gutter so that, uh, the crossing is safer. And then the reason the blue is a little bit larger than the railroad crossing itself is there's so- some, uh, grade issues on the roadway itself that we can correct to make the ride smoother across the railroad and also get better drainage off the road, which will improve safety. I stand for any questions that you might have.
Questions, Rob.
Great job.
Thank you for your time this evening, and again, I'm looking for an action of you for us to proceed forward with bidding on the project, and if so, we will bring it back to you on, uh, September 15th for you to consider awarding the project.
Thank you. Motion?
I'd move to approve the Spokane Street and Prairie Avenue Improvement Project for you to go out to bid.
Second.
Motion six seconds. Further questions? Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Rob. Next item up is administrative staff reports, and we have the Union Pacific Railroad spur removal. Mr. Melvin coming forth.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Council, Bill Melvin, City Engineer. At the, um, August 4th council meeting, we, um, received authorization from Mayor and Council to proceed with, uh, purchase of the Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way. The, um, we were asked to return with kind of a brief update of how we will, would proceed with construction and, and look at funding and options for that project. So we, we're just here tonight to give you a brief update on that, and I will try to be very brief. Probably the first steps in development of the project will be to salvage the rail that's out there. There is salvage value in that. There's companies that do this. We would need to contract with the company to come in and salvage that, the rail, and we're not quite sure yet on the value, but there's a bit of value for that that'll help us go into funding and, and construction of the actual trail once the rail is gone. We'll try to time the removal of that rail, um, crossing with the Highway 41 removal because there's a good possibility that a rail company that might want to do salvage will want to come in there, buy rail, and then back themselves out of there. So we'll, we'll try to move forward and find somebody that, that they might want to just salvage and pick that up as we go. So, um, that'll be the first step that we'll do is, is to work on salvage. Our next goal would be to prepare cost estimates and exhibits in preparation for a grant application. Currently, we're thinking probably the earliest construction season is in that 2023 timeframe. We want to wait till I T D is done with their project, and so, uh, we would probably apply for a grant application in most likely like that fall or winter of '22. We would try to combine that with the Sentinel Trail Foundation Joint Powers Boards and the others in the area to extend that to, um, Hutter Road. There's currently a portion of the Prairie Trail that's missing from Hutter, um, to Meyer, um, through there. There's been a lot of work that's been done on, on preparation for a grant application, um, from those other agencies. They chose not to move forward at this time just because they, um, there's a little piece of the trail that was missing to Meyer. Now that we have the whole section, we think it'll be a much more powerful and attractive grant application, so we will work with those, um, parties as well. The, um, so we'll also be looking at other funding options. One is we currently have, um, dollars with listed within our multimodal impact fee that we're proposing. There'll be a new category that will be moving forward to council, um, coming up that would help fund this if those are approved. There's also the possibility of selling easements to utility companies that could maybe use that corridor, and those are some of the other funding options that have been used going forward. So anyway, that's, that's how we're going to move forward, um, following acquisition of the rail right-of-way to get the trail actually completed. The engineering division will be turning the project over to Parks, um, coming up here, but we'll be providing whatever technical support and, and support to fill out grants and acquisition that we can do, um, to Parks that we can't do. So anyway, that's just a brief update that we were asked to return with, and is there any other questions?
Questions, Bill?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item up is, uh, Mayor and Council comments, and, you know, I think the only comment I'd make is, is they're watching numbers on, uh, new cases reported. Last couple of days have been down from where they were. Hopefully, that's a sign of things to come, and we'll continue to see that number drop, so I appreciate everyone doing their best to help lessen the spread. I know we walk into City Hall and everyone's wearing masks, and, uh, I, I appreciate that. So hopefully, we can continue to do that, and we'll see the, the, uh, number of new cases continue to decline. So with that, I know Council President Wilhelm would like the floor. So yours.
I do. Thank you for the time. Shelley's going to help click through this, um, pretty short PowerPoint. Over the past several months, there have been a lot of negativity and fear in the world. I felt it was about time to shine a bright light on the city of Post Falls and our employees. At our last council meeting, the city held the public hearing for the budget. This is the 12th year in a row that the city did not take a tax increase, with one exception of funding streetlights six years ago. This is an amazing accomplishment, and Shelley Endurud and her staff deserve to be complimented for it. If the city had taken the 3% increase over these years, the total additional tax revenue in the fiscal year budget 21 would have been $3,731,988. This is a savings to our citizens, and we are able to do that because of staff's ability to find ways to save money in our budget. Total cumulative amount of tax revenue not taken over the past 12 years is $22,977. This is a huge savings to our taxpayers. Staff has worked hard to ensure we are presented a balanced budget, and staff has had to be creative and physically responsible in their planning. I wanted to provide a couple of, uh, examples of some projects where staff has come in under budget and created a savings for the city. Headed up by Teresa Benner, the Human Resource Department purchased recruiting software, thereby reducing staffing needs in the department. This saves $32,000 a year. Also, the H R department changed our dental program into a self-funded program, and that savings is approximately $75,000 over the past two years. Headed up by Bob Seal and John Beecham, on this page, our city department has saved $251,678 over the last three years in chip seal projects alone. The engineering department with longtime employees Bill Melvin and Rob Paulus saved $60,044 on the Seventh Street Reconstruction Project, 1,000 on their I T D ADA grant in 2017, and $70,033 on the Idaho to Bay Street sidewalk project. In Justin Miller's department in 2015, the city made a decision to move from state electrical, uh, and plumbing inspections to provo- to performing an in-house service. From 2016 to 2020 year-to-date, the city has realized a savings of $1,418,000 and also has an improved level of service for the customers and a small reduction in a few of the fees. Headed up by John Beecham in our wastewater department, the city has come under budget on the Ideline Forest Main and Jaclyn Lift Station by $222,750. On the Riverside Harbor Lift Station, the city came in under budget $52,974. The water department realized a small savings in a water improvement project in 2019 of $2,651. Headed up by Dave Fair and Brian Adams in the Parks Department, there is a list of projects that have come in under budget. Beck Shelter saved $30,367. Beck Splash Pad saved $20,427. Crown Point Park saved $256,266. Syringa Splash Pad, $8,373. Tollamore Splash Pad saved $16,229. And finally, the recreation software that we changed has saved the city $105,092 in the last three years. Headed up by Chief Pat Knight, uh, our police department has had a few projects come in under, on, in under budget as well. The P D storage facility saved $10,800. The animal shelter or animal control facility saved $9,861, and the dispatch project was able to secure a grant that saved the city $340,878. If you added up all of these savings for our citizens and taxpayers, in this brief list of projects, it totals $3,080,423. If we add the total tax savings over the last 12 years, this total becomes $29 million or $25,89,500, a job well done by city staff. If the mayor and council pleases, Shelley Endurud, our city administrator, has agreed to bring forward an accomplishment, accomplishment report to council in December of each year for the prior fiscal year. This December, that presentation would be in fiscal year, for fiscal year 2020. Thank you to staff for all their efforts and initiatives. If anyone needs copies of this PowerPoint, please see our city clerk. She will make it available to you. It will also be on the city's website. I personally would like to, to thank Shelley Endurud for her excellent leadership, and I would like to thank all of the Post Falls employees for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lynda. Won't speak for council, but I will speak for myself and say I share your appreciation, and I've seen some head nods here as well, so, uh, very good information. Thank, thank you for bringing it forward, and Shelley, again, we, we appreciate the effort you have to do.
Thank you. I'll, I'll share that to our staff also.
Please do.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
And I know that's not the goal of all of the wonderful things that you and the staff have done, but it certainly makes our job easier.
Thank you.
For you to.
Definitely.
Be so diligent. My comment tonight, and a long night, um, today is the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution, which pleases me greatly, um, because not only did women gain the right to vote, but could also hold public office. So on behalf of myself and Counselor Wilhelm.
Our brokens.
Yes, we are celebrating, we are celebrating, uh, along with a lot of men, but the suffragist, and kudos to Corlaine, the, um, they placed public art today, the suffragist, uh, statue made by Terry Lee, created by Terry Lee. But what was wonderful and should be an example for public art, that was funded all by donation, private donations. So, um, that was quite an accomplishment. It was about $60,000 project funded by $100 donations, $500 donations, but it's a beautiful statue, and it is on Front Avenue, um, about Sixth Street overlooking McEwen Park, so she represents all of us, so. Happy 100th anniversary, women voting.
Thank you. And who said you can't teach men how to do things right? Took a while, but they got it. Any other comments? We do not need an executive session tonight?
We do not.
Next motion is?
Jurn.
Jurn.
You need, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you. Chief?